Counsel come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung. DeYoung, are you on the phone?
Make sure you unmute yourself.
Hear me, I'm here.
Randor Horst, here.
I have.
Carlstone?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Spoor?
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Sommo.
Support.
Brander Horst-Banster, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
I would like to reappoint Curtis Baugh to serve another term on the Civil Service Commission. He has served on the Civil Service Commission since 2003. If approved, Curtis' new four-year term will expire on April 1, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
Sommo.
Support.
Brander Horst-Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, could you please call the roll?
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. At this time, we have opportunity for public forums, so anyone wishing to address counsel. And this session is regarding any agenda item. We'd ask that you please step to the microphone, please make sure you talk into the microphone, state your name and address, and work hard and limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Tony Bakovin, 1702 Neil Drive, and I will, I'm gonna address three things tonight, so I will talk fast. So try to get through those, or I could come up three times, I guess, but we'll try to do it in one. I'd like to address items E5, E6, and E7 tonight. As it looks to me by reading through the packet, tonight you'll be voting on engineering plans for roughly about $977,000. I want to start out by saying that I think projects like this are, can be very cool for a community, and they can be very rewarding and quite successful when planned out properly and funded properly. But this tends to feel like there's a huge rush to get some of these things pushed through when the funding hasn't been secured, the operating expenses have still not been declared yet. And so, tonight I'd like to ask that you table voting on the engineering fees tonight in the tune of $977,000. The biggest reason that I'm curious about why there's such a rush is you've all been given a gift. If you read your packet on page 108, it clearly states, "Under the terms of the city's contract with Scheid Hattery, engineering services can be suspended 30 days." So if you suspended the vote on this 30 days, that gets you past the budget hearing. So you'd have a whole lot better idea whether now is the right time to do that, or do we need to be a little more fiscally responsible and continue to try to raise those funds? I have no doubt you'll raise the funds, but history would show you that projects in this community are pretty successful when the money's there. I can give you examples. The sports park was one of those. You know, I listened to the council meeting last meeting, and Spencer mentioned we don't want to wait 10 years to get going on this, and I understand that. But much like Pella Fiber Project, when you do it methodically and get people involved like the community, these projects get off the ground very successfully, and they end up very successful and very well received. So I would encourage you to, if you didn't read it, read it, and take advantage of the 30-day gift. It's 30 days. You've got a budget session coming up that will tell you a lot about the financial strength of this community and where you should and shouldn't be spending money. And if it needs to be delayed, then so be it. Because I'll assure you, the engineering fees and the change orders you'll pay will cost you significantly. And so I feel like you've got an opportunity to save those fees by waiting 30 days. At the last council meeting also, I heard, when I listened to it, and this probably troubled me more than the money you want to spend, a couple of you said at the 61-minute mark, so if you'd like to go back and listen to it to determine which one of you said it, because there were two of you, that, "Why would we ever do something like this without Mike telling us that it works? He looks at these things inside out, frontwards and backwards." Well, I worked with Mike for eight years as a council member, longer than all of you, with the exception of Mark DeYoung. And I can tell you that Mike doesn't tell you how you should vote. He gives you facts, he gives you information for you to make good, sound financial decisions. Putting this on his shoulders is just not right. It's not fair to Mike, and quite honestly, I think you should rethink why you became a council member. I believe this project can work.
Thirty seconds, Tony.
Thank you. I believe this project can work. But if it doesn't, it's not Mike Nardini's fault. So make sure that you're making those decisions and not just relying on facts about, "Does a project fit the mold? Can we do it? Is there a place in town to do it?" It's your responsibility to make sure it fiscally makes sense. So I'd ask you to take advantage of the 30-day gift you have and really do your homework on whether this today makes financial sense. I'm not suggesting you scrap the project. I'm suggesting you go to work and raise the money. Thank you.
You can't beat Tony Bakovin to the microphone. Kevin and Nicole, and I think with all the things going on today, we're gonna start with prayer. So, Father in heaven, we the people of Pella dedicate this chamber of comments to you. Each person, down to Lord Mark DeYoung, Lynn Brander Horst, Calvin Banster, Spencer Carlstone, Dave Hopkins, Liz Spoor, and their great assistant, Matt Nardini. May each of them hear your voice as they make decisions. These are some big things. May these elected council members and others involved in the running of this city of Refuge carefully and prayerfully consider their long-term impact on the citizens of Pella and their children and grandchildren. We ask that you would be the Lord over this city of Refuge, which was dedicated to you so many years ago. We say that you are welcome here, and we open the door to your transforming presence, wisdom, and grace. We welcome your truth and your righteousness into our many city decisions. We invite your love and peace into the atmosphere and guidance of the city as we focus on your higher ground in all aspects concerning Pella. We pray that our city leaders will embrace biblical values and operate on the principles of our constitution and protect the rights and the will of our citizens. May those who oversee the leadership of our city do so in fear of the Lord, knowing how serious it is to be trusted with these positions. May they follow James 3:17, "But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gently willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy." We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Well, that comment and that request are, having the Father, follows right into exactly--
Can I get your names?
My name's DJ DeYoung. Debbie and I live in Pella Work Forum. We own Pella Books, and many folks walk into our store to buy books or inquire about the 160-year-old church we house our books in. About 40% of our traffic is local, and about 60% is from outside Pella. Last year, in the week leading up to Trulap time, a man walked in, the name of Tom Byfru. He is the author and editor of Dutch the Magazine, the magazines you see in front of you. Dutch Magazine is a 12-year-old publication from London, Ontario. Their goal is to show the Dutch influence, the influence of Dutch people. Tom has visited many Dutch communities in Illinois, Michigan, New York State, Washington, and California. All of these communities do a fine job in representing the Dutch culture. However, Tom found that the city of Pella, unlike any he had seen in travels around America and Canada, did an excellent job. He saw the citizens of Pella with great passion and care for the city and others. The cleanliness and orderly of Pella were proud representation of the historical Dutch culture that he had not seen in his travels. He states that the very, he was very impressed with Imola Grant and the Dutch facades around downtown, like most of, like he had seen in other Dutch communities. But what he found what impressed him more than anything else was that Pella was willing to stand with large corporations like Walmart and Applebee's and have them conform to our building standards. The fact that Pella was willing to put their Dutch heritage and pride, their foundations ahead of the dollars these organizations represented with strength, willpower, and tenacity of a Dutch community that he had not seen before. Tom stated that he would like to do an article on Pella in one of the upcoming monthly Dutch magazines. I stated that I believe the community would be honored to be featured in an upcoming issue. The Dutch magazine has been featured both in the January, February issue and the April, March, March-April issues. Tom also informed me that Fanchewa College in London, Ontario uses Pella Iowa as a case study for the 400-level urban planning and development class. This past Thursday, Tom produced a podcast with William Paul, Professor of Environmental Design and Planning at Fanchewa. Professor Paul states that city planners and designers don't always recognize how sense of community makes it stronger. That is why they study Pella. It creates economic development tools to improve and strengthen the economy and build community. Last week, I met with historic Pella Preservation Committee. I shared with them Tom's experience here in Pella and let them know our plans for the share, the same message that I shared with them with the city council tonight. They requested that I provide all the city council members and all of your heads of your department heads these magazines. I have given Mandy 22 sets of the Dutch magazine for distribution to you and your department heads. In addition, this week, I'll email you the link to view the podcast between Tom and Professor Paul from Fanchewa College. It is apparent that we here in Pella are standard bearers and models for other communities. It's good to know that we have been blessed with and what the founding generations would be proud of, what we have been able to keep these 175 years. The Pella citizens, commissions, each council to care for our community. Our building plans and developments, our portrayal of Pella to Iowa and beyond are in your hands. The message that Tom writes, that gives us, is this. We have been given a treasure here in the city of Pella. It truly is a city of refuge. Our citizens in Pella and around Marion County know it. Our state sees it, and those who visit us from outside our nation or from our nation see it. We are held up in classrooms as examples of what we do. I too encourage you to pause, to reflect on what's been shared, to reflect on what you see as you have been given these keys, very privileged keys in this beautiful city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, DJ, for the magazines.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let's start. I have equivalent of 10 minutes, but I know I'm gonna cut it now.
Can we get a name, please?
I actually want to, I want to agree with the first speaker.
Can we get a name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Harry Erlich, E-H-R-L-I-C-H, live on Countryside Lane. Thank you for, I'm a little nervous. It's been about four years since I've gone through one of these. I want to agree with the first speaker in terms of the timing and the need to move ahead at this point in time when you're gonna have your budget workshops next week and look at your five and maybe even longer-term budget impacts of these kinds of projects. I did have a chance to talk with Mr. Nardini. He was nice enough to follow up on the property tax issue. He educated me a little bit in it. It's different than California, the four years I've done here. But, and I, actually, I concur that the maximum could be 5% more if everything else works out with your budget discussions. I wouldn't want to see your basic services cut. I wouldn't want to see you go backwards in terms of community services, public safety, fire, ambulance, because that's where the general fund monies go. My second point is project budget creep. It's up 8 million in one year. You need to cap and maybe even step back a little bit in terms of what the budget is gonna be for these major projects. It's going up 8 million. It may be with the options and bid alternates, which I'm familiar with. The temptation is to want to do those. But if you do, then you're gonna have to either look at more donor money or finance more. The third point is the financing, 17 million. Lost funds are only good for 20 years in terms of the referendum that was passed. It's gonna be about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars a year. Rough estimate, it depends on your interest rate, to be able to administer that debt. In 20 years, you're gonna spend another $12 million on debt service. And sometimes you have to do that, but it would be good if you could minimize that. So that's a concern. Looking for the additional contributions is gotta be a number-one priority because in order to go ahead, right now you have 60% of your funding. That's not comfortable when the only other place you can go is back to reserves or, you know, or come back to the public and ask them for more money in terms of some kind of an election. Another point I'd like to make is general fund impact. Having been a community services, public works director, been a manager in a couple of water agencies, your run-up cost from these projects is gonna be significant. Three to four years from now, you're gonna have to budget another million dollars to operate these facilities. Have you got a plan on where that's gonna come from? Because that's gonna come from the general fund or additional contributions or from other revenues to be raised. I've looked at a couple of other facilities, and most of them are running about 50% to 60% revenue. So that means you're going to have another net cost to the city. Right now, your equalics complex is 330,000, golf courses, 400,000, 500,000. You don't, you can't afford that too much more into the future. So you should have a solution or an idea of where those funds are gonna come from.
I really hate to cut you off, but--
No, no, I'm gonna just make one recommendation. I think that the renovation of the community center ought to be your number-one project upfront. You've got general fund monies, you can proceed with that, and you can move forward in some kind of a good staging manner to work on the other projects. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Gess. I live at 1816 West 3rd Street here in Pella, and I also serve as the Vice President of Human Resources at Vermeer. I've lived here in Pella for 10 years with my husband and three children, and I'm here tonight to share Vermeer's support for the recreation center. For 75 years, Vermeer has been proud to call Pella its home. And we're proud of the role that we play in helping many others, hundreds to thousands, also call Pella and the surrounding area home as well. Over our history, we, and certainly true today, we believe that to attract and retain the team members that it takes to build, design, and support the equipment that our customers use around the world requires continued investments. And if you've looked at our mile-long facility on the east side of town recently, you can see evidence of that continued investment in the community of Pella. We completely rebuilt our lost manufacturing square footage here in Pella after the tornado, but we didn't stop there. We chose to invest in several significant facilities in Pella. We chose to invest in an engineering innovation center in the form of Shop 48. We built a best-in-class eco-center. We've just completed a 300,000-square-foot global parts distribution center to serve the world. And we just renovated the lately North American headquarters as they moved into their new investment here in Pella into a global dealer training that will center, that will continue to attract dealership personnel from around the world into our community on a regular basis. And with the completion of our new parts distribution center, we've just announced and begun renovation on our previous parts distribution center to turn that into a team member center that will provide enhanced training and benefit offerings to the 3,000-plus team members who come to our Pella campus every day. In short, I share all of that because investment is key to growth. And growth doesn't always mean population. It can mean a lot of different things, but it is key to that continued growth. And we appreciate the city of Pella's desire to share in this mentality of right-sized investment in amenities and facilities that both current and future residents and families want and need. Our newer and our longer-term team members are taking notice and appreciate the investments that are happening in the Pella community and in the surrounding communities and within Vermeer. We thank you to the city of Pella for those investments. But one of the reoccurring themes that is still out there, that we do hear and take note of, is a missing right-sized and right-scaled recreation center that appropriately represents our community's needs, but also creates a positive and shared place of belonging for those residents that have been longstanding, but also for those of us that are maybe newer to the community and searching positive and active ways to become a part of the community. On a personal note, I'm a native Iowan, and I've got family scattered all around the state of Iowa in rural communities similar to ours, whether that be Harlan, Clear Lake, Iowa, Carroll, Spencer, Spirit Lake. Every single one of those communities where I go to see my family has invested in a very similar recreation center experience that we're proposing here. And I will say that every time we go as a family to those centers, there is a delight that I experience in the multi-generation, inclusive community involvement that a recreation center provides to a community. So I just thank you for considering the Pella Recreation Center, and on behalf of Vermeer and on behalf of our family, we are in full support.
Good evening. My name is John Bowman. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Human Resources Officer for Pella Corporation. I also live at 708 P Street. And I'm here, you know, first and foremost, I would second and third comments that Kate made and the impact it's having for Vermeer and the same impact that this new recreation center is gonna have for Pella Corporation. So fully, on behalf of Pella Corporation, we fully support the proposed recreation center. In fact, we pledged $6 million in support of this important project. I will tell you that, that we've been very successful at being able to attract and retain key members to our team in order to grow our business. We have this significant growth strategy that's been underway for a number of years. And the impact that the development that's occurred so far in the city of Pella has been really instrumental in our ability to attract and retain those team members. But it's also having a big impact on our existing team members as well. We get comment after comment in that regard, and certainly motivates us to continue to support the continuing investment in this respect. There's no question that a project like this will have a big impact, a very positive impact on this vibrant community that we have here in Pella. And I think it will bring a lot of good support to the local businesses, which is also extremely important as well. But most important, again, just to underscore for everyone, is that the impact this will have on our ability to continue to make the investments and grow Pella Corporation is really, really significant and really strongly encourage the city council to seriously consider moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, Ada Fisher, 1546 Closeau Drive. Now, this isn't my opinion alone, but we've got a real problem here in Pella. There's a dark cloud that has emerged over Pella during the last few years. We seem to be losing the feel of a close-knit Dutch community of standards to whatever it takes to get what I want mentality. I say some of you know what I'm speaking of without having to elaborate. Do any of you really believe that now is the time to take a financial risk? Risk was a term that was used at the last city council. It wasn't my term. The people of Irmandale with a population of 46,000 didn't believe it to be good judgment to take such a risk right now, as over 80% of the voters voted no on a $43 million Uplex. Yet, here we are, a city of 10,560, not even being given the opportunity to vote for a rec center that costs 50 million, 55 million, 60 million? Do we really know yet? Here's what the mayor of Irmandale had to say. "The decision to bring the Uplex project to a vote was a deliberate one made by the city council because we believed this crucially here from our residents in this matter. I commend everyone who took the time to cast their ballot and participate in this important decision-making progress." The Irmandale City Council operates on six pillars of character counts. They recite these six pillars before every city council meeting. These pillars are trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And they have proven that they show it. Trustworthiness, which is evidenced by their decision to give all financial information about the Uplex upfront. That Uplex was expected to need an additional taxpayer subsidy of $850,000 per year for maintenance and expenses. We have asked multiple times, and you have yet to give us numbers. There's no transparency. Respect, which is evidenced by their decision to let people vote after giving them the information they wanted. Responsibility, which is shown by the fact that they are willing to, aren't willing to risk or gamble with people's money. That means making tough financial decisions, even when it means to slow down on high-dollar projects. Fairness. They made everything clear so the people knew exactly what they were voting on. Caring. They are considering all the people, not just those who can afford a project of this magnitude. And citizenship. They use the democratic process before moving forward. Mr. Mayor, you're quick to remind us that citizens are excited for this rec center. You work for all of us, and you are considering the fact that we are, have you considered the fact that we are living in an unstable economy? Bank closures? Astronomical food prices? Our families and elderly are struggling, yet you are willing to put this on the back of us taxpayers. I believe that school board member Tim Tripp had an excellent response after listening to requests for money. He suggested that if corporations see a need for a recreation center to keep people here, they could contribute more money. This information is for the March 3 Marion County Express.
Again, I hate to cut you off, but you're well past your three minutes.
I appreciate it.
Please wrap it up.
I will wrap up. I ask you again to please let the citizens vote. After all, we have been given the details. It's essential time to let us vote, knowing that what we're voting for. Thank you for your time.
So, we have a lot, appears we have a lot of people want to speak, so please limit your three comments. I don't want to have timer and start cutting you off, but we gotta be done here at some point. So please limit yourself to three minutes. Thank you.
Dave Spurgh, and I agree with that lady there. The last thing we need is a sports complex. What we need to do is to fix roads that need to be repaired, sewers that are declining. We have had sewer backups in my basement for the last three years. We have begged, we have begged you people to get it cleared up, but you don't. It falls on deaf ears. Avoid this porch complex. Do your job. Fix the roads. Fix the sewers. We have no curbs on our road because it keeps getting mauled over. And it's, it's ridiculous. There are roads that need to be fixed, sewers that need to be fixed. Sports complex can come later.
Keith Hoxburgh, 224 South Street. I'd like to have a little bit of rebuttal to our corporations here in town. You guys use the same argument for Boss Landing, and it costs about half a million a year of support now. We're short 40 million. You guys, if you want it that bad, we're short 40 million yet. And the young lady from Vermeer, an art department we worked every day, we're moving operations to Des Moines. I don't know how loyal we are here in town. We're looking elsewhere. So just wanted to have a little bit of rebuttal there. Then I had a businessman that wanted me to share his thoughts with the council. I'm going to hand out what he had, so I run out of time. You guys will be able to see it later, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to rip over that.
Don't forget to give one to Mark.
Here we are on the verge of spending more money on a project that has, have been developed and promoted with a lack of transparency that is astounding. And what do we know? Not enough. Questions for the council. Have you done a market survey to determine the general public's support for the rec center? The lost tax vote is not a good indicator. Only 28% of the people in town voted that day, and nearly half of those people were against this. So we really need more support. He asks, and he says that that is not enough real hard money support. Number two, have you secured commitments from the people of the community to join the rec center at a membership fee that you have determined for your operating budget? Do we know what that is yet? Have you, number three, have you pulled all the numbers together? The building budget, the operating budget, the maintenance budget? Number four, have you secured all the money? The loans, the contributions, the gifts, pre-construction memberships? Number five, have you secured the land to build University Street? Number six, where is the list of infrastructure projects, the projects that the other half of Boss money is going to be needed for? These questions must be answered before committing to invest more money in engineering plans. And we, we are going to have all that information? When are we going to have all that information? Remember, the taxpayers are the lenders, and the lenders want more information. My current knowledge tells me that the funding is not all in hand. We're still 40 million short. Property tax revenue stream is uncertain due to the State of Iowa's error. And with recent bank failures and uncertainty in the economy, we cannot continue to count on a stream of tourist-free disbanding money in the town. And the average resident in Pella is struggling with inflation and all these prices. That plus the commitment of the city to operate the ambulance service, continue with the golf course at Boss Landing, the current swimming pool, I think we are fully booked. There would be a right time to build when all this money has been routed up in a community-wide effort. So this gentleman, this ex-businessman here in town, he would like you to put a pause and get more money and more things together too, like a lot of us here would. And he thanks you on my behalf. Thank you.
Mary, Bristolville, 762 and 18th Place. I'd like to have a conversation or a discussion about surplus funds, the 5 million surplus funds, but I've got a couple of sidebars. One is that this is great that we now have this on Pella Fiber, but I would really request, and other folks also, that when you speak, spit into the mics and you can be heard. The constituents are interested in what you say. Secondly, I think that I heard on the street that Pella Fiber is in the block, and I'm wondering if that includes debt service. Now, this $5 million, and I'm assuming the majority of that is probably coming from the electric department, and that concerns me. I know that staff has been directed to make it happen, and I'm concerned, I use an example, and I, last time it was discussed that that's why we have insurance. In 2018, when the tornado went through, it took down eight, a pretty good section of our 69 Beacon Line. If memory serves me correct, we were responsible for about a third of that. I think the defining line was insurance covered the structures, but not the conductors. So I think we had about a third of that. Also, there are things that are not insurable in the department. Some equipment, and it's north of a million bucks to replace. You can't insure that. What are we going to do if this happens? We need to keep the lights on. And I, I just want to say that staff is working hard, but the fiduciary responsibilities or irresponsibilities fall squarely on council. Thank you.
Karma Ruth Ben, 300 West Fifth Street, Pella. I might just have a couple of things. First of all, the last council meeting, Lynn, you were great, agreed with what you said and what others have mentioned. And in regards to the rec complex, the rec center, the thing that disturbs me is the look of it. I mean, you think you need a rec center. Why do we need something so elegant? Yeah, it's Pella, but why can't we just have something common? And we don't need such elegant, and it looks like a cathedral with all the glass and everything. That's not what a rec center looks like. But it's Pella, and we always have to have the best. And I can't believe that you went to Pella Public to ask for money, and like I need already mentioned, you know, it's, they gave good reasons why they are refusing to help. And, you know, our kids, our grandkids, they say, you know, I want to go to the movie, for an example, and, because everybody else is doing it. So you say to your kids or grandkids, well, how many are doing it? Well, I, I don't know, you know, maybe a dozen. Well, that's not everybody. And that's just like with this rec center. You're saying, everybody approves of it. Well, how many is everybody? It's not the town, and so there needs to be a vote in regards, because I think the last time it was brought up, it was with the, the community center and with that tax bill. And I think a lot of people were confused in regards to the rec center and the community center. And so there was a lot of confusion in that voting. And I agree that the, that a community center needs to get finished. That should be a priority because that's been here the longest. And also, as for the streets, sidewalks uptown, I fell in August up on the brick, street sidewalks on Franklin in front of the Calkinsville, because, and I was just walking along my, my own business, and I tripped over a raised brick, and it is still there. It has not been fixed. Therefore, and I had quite bummed up, but therefore, you need to be looking at your sidewalks, and you need to be looking at your streets, because like the one on West Third going north, that one has so many holes in it that it's dangerous, you know, it's just dangerous. So I just think that it's just sad what is going on in our town in regards to, you know, what do you, this and this, and then now we have this smoke shop or whatever it's called coming to town. And yet, we had a business leave town because the city couldn't help them to reestablish or remove, but yet we can have crap come in. So I don't know, but it's, like they say, there is darkness over the city. Thank you.
My name is Nate Vile. I live at 320 East 13th Street, Unit 11. I moved to Pella in 2009. It's become my adopted city. I'm the newly retired manager from High Point Apartments, the 100-unit apartment complex over by the high school. I've also served the community as a member of PACE since it was formed in 2016, and served along with Don and several others on the housing subcommittee for that. I want to thank you all for the hard work that you do for the city and for us as residents. Over the weekend, I sent you all a lengthy email with some documentation with concerns about the national economy and international situation, especially financial and banking sector, and how that may have unknown impact on those of us here in the community and the state of Iowa. I would just briefly address two points to reinforce what others have suggested as a pause. Number one, on our taxing and spending concerns, I supported the, the local option sales tax extension. However, I do have concerns about the proposed order of spending when we lack specific details for the renovation for the community center and for building the, the rec center, both of which I support in principle that we do. These concerns include the funding, total costs, land acquisitions, right-of-way, the pro forma operating budget, and then future liabilities to us as citizens for the operational I appreciate the long history that you have as a council with the cap at 10.2 on our millage ask. Calvin, you had a good explanation of budgeting here a couple of months back in the, in the newsletter. However, just a quick survey around the high school shows that over the last 10 or 11 years, property taxes have doubled in that time period, even though our millage ask has not changed. Our assessments are going up, and we're all about to get our postcard from the assessor this next weekend with an 18% approximate increase in, in our assessments. From my perspective, it seems puzzling that we would need to raise our capital task when we're going to be getting an 18% increase in, in the assessments for, for 20, for 23, payable in '24, '25. I think we can cover the shortfall on the ambulance service from reserve funds and defer the conversation about our capital spending at a minimum of the 30 days and maybe a much longer time period, given what we're seeing by way of impact in Pella for national and, and state actions that are yet to come. I gave each of you this evening a little summary chart. This is federal reserve rates going back from '65, and at the bottom, it shows the ratio of 10-year to 2-year. Let me share a quick, just personal story. Back in the 70s, after I came home from Vietnam, I was a budding new real estate agent in Ames, and I started to buy property at the same time. In 1975, if you look at my chart, I went six months and could not sell a thing. And it was only much later that I realized, we're in the midst of a recession, and I, I did not understand that. I continued to buy property into 1980, and you, you all can remember what happened in '80, '82, and I ended up losing everything, and it was like 25-year struggle to recover from, from what happened there. Sales dropped dramatically when the dot-com bust happened, because I was in the tech sector, and then same thing happened, recovered, and then we hit 2007, 2008, and what happened there. And as a net result, I needed a timeout, and my good friend, who ended up being the owner of High Point, gave me the opportunity to come over here in 2009, which, which I, which I have loved. If you look at the bottom chart, that is the ratio of the 10-year to the 2-year. The shorter the term of the treasuries, the lower the rate, and the longer the term, the higher the rate. When you look at when that has inverted, like we're in right now, nearly every time we have had that as an indicator of a significant recession that's, that's likely going to come. And if, you know, if you look back at '80, '82, what happened in our community, that relates to the development that was done on the south side. And we have not had a housing development for starter homes, for, for, for the young professionals since, since Brook, since Brook Circle. If you look ahead.
Nate, you're way over three minutes.
I'm sorry. Last point I would make then would be to look at what happened in 2000 with Vermeer and Pella Corp. High Point came online in '81. That was right at the time that WorldCom and Global Crossing failed. Vermeer had, had a large number of vacancies, and Pella, the High Point apartment, never got filled until after the Great Recession, finally in 2011. I would, I would support the project, but I would ask for a pause.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on.
My name is Jill DeBrice, and I live at 623 North Oaks Drive. Real quick, I just had a few questions. I was hoping to get clarity because I've heard different things about the aquatic center, or rec center. How many gyms does the plan have?
If you have questions, that you need information, you need to contact City Hall. This isn't a question-and-answer session.
So at some point, if information could be put out there on...
I would just say that the whole plan is on our website.
Okay. Also, just if we could clarify, you don't have to do it tonight, but I know that there's people, including myself, who are still wondering, is there in fact going to be a vote on the rec center? It seemed like when that lost tax vote happened, there was information posted on Facebook. Yes, there's still going to be a vote for the rec center or against it. I know there's confusion on that, just in case you guys want to clarify that at some point. And then also, I would encourage you to look at Sue Center and how that's played out for them. They did the same thing. They wanted to attract people, built this huge complex, sounded great. People's property taxes have gone up so much that they're now looking to move to Orange City because it's not affordable anymore. Obviously, that's not your goal. You don't want people to move away from Pella. You've all stated that one of your goals is to get people to move to Pella, and I, I can see where the shiny objects are, like, yeah, maybe people will move here for this, but I think one of the top needs is affordability, and it seems like something like this enormous thing is going to end up costing us a lot of money and making it harder to live here just for a normal family, making a normal amount of money. So I would just say, please pause on any decision. Please make it more clear to the community on whether or not there's going to be a vote, just so we know, or whether that vote kind of already happened when we voted for lost. Thank you.
Moving on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent of gyms? Can I get a motion for approval of the consented gym?
Still moved.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion?
I just wanted to compliment Mandy on the policy and planning, the minutes, because there's a lot of stuff going back and forth. And she did a great job of capturing the comments from us Yehus up here, so did a nice job on that.
All right, anything else?
I would like to say something. Getting up there and speaking is not easy. And I remember doing that numerous times before I ran for an election. So I wanted to thank everyone that got up there and spoke. It amazes me, the number of people that I see in chambers. And I'm extremely grateful that I get to hear various opinions when I sit here because I can't respond to as many emails as I would if all of you had sent me one. And I can't do my job and talk with all of you. So you're courageous. I thank you. I thank you for giving up an evening and allowing us to hear your viewpoints. Thank you.
All right. We need to vote on the motion for approval of the tent of the consented gym. So all in favor, please say yes. Close, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Resolution Number 6562, entitled Resolution Setting a Date for a Public Hearing on the Maximum Property Tax Dollar Collection and Maximum Levy Rate for Fiscal Year '23, '24. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those folks watching at home in attendance, I'd like to direct you to the big board for presentation on this item. As Mayor Deward stated, what we're considering this evening is simply setting the public hearing date for a public hearing of the maximum operating levy for the fiscal year budget that would begin on July 1st, 2023, and extend through June 30th, 2024. Now, when we talk about the maximum operational levy that we're going to be discussing on April 4th, it's very important to note that council's not obligated to levy the maximum amount. It simply gives you the flexibility to do so if you choose so. And also, we also want to make sure that council's aware that's the big item, is that you're not obligated to levy the maximum amount. And once again, all this resolution is doing is setting the April 4th date. Now, for this year, we do have two options that we will be seeking council input on. And we'll go over those two options here very shortly. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. Option number one is to maintain the current property tax levy at $10.20 per $1,000 of taxable valuation. And what we have up here is just a comparison to the current year and a couple of things to point out. If council were to choose this option, as far as operational support for property taxes, what that would mean is we'd be levying $162,000 less for next year than what we are currently for this year. And as you can see, what's being proposed with this option is dropping the operational levy from $10.02 to $9.87. And if we were to choose this option, what our operational levy amount would be is just $6,196,000. Currently, we're at $6,358,000. That's a decrease of about $162,000 on that as well. Now, with that, we're going to be discussing this issue in a lot of detail during our budget work sessions at the end of this month, actually, the 28th and 29th of March, on it as well. And we can explain, if council chooses this option, how we would make it work for the city as well. But that's option number one. Let's go ahead, Mandy, if we could, please. Option number two would be to increase the property tax amount in total to $10.70, which is about a 5% increase. This option, if council were to choose it, would provide you with additional flexibility for the 2024 budget. And looking at this option, it would yield about $300,000 more for property tax revenues if we were to choose to do so. But let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, also, I want to make very clear with council tonight, whatever option you consider staff is fine with. In fact, it will not impact the city administration budget recommendation. And I don't mean to sound... Councils, I want to clarify. It's your decision what the city's property tax rate is. Staff will be making a recommendation. I've had an opportunity. And I want to thank a few of you for sitting down with me and discussing next year's budgets. It's of value to me. Our recommendation for the next year will be to maintain the property tax levy amount. So if council chooses option two tonight, that will simply give you additional operational flexibility if you would like to do so on that. And if you feel that there's anything that is unfunded or underfunded, rather, for next year, is when you at least have the flexibility to increase property taxes if you choose to do so. So with that, Mandy, do we have any... Oh, okay. These are just some factors. And we'll be talking about these in greater detail during the budget work session and also on April 4th. But with the city's property tax rate, it is important to note that we do have one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Iowa. The current rate has been the same for the past 21 years. For water rates for next year, we will be proposing a 7% increase in water rates. And that deals... And the main culprit of that is just the capital needs of the utility. In addition, we also want to mention that our garbage contract is up this July. And usually, with contract renewals, there comes some sort of proposed increase with this. We want to make sure council is aware of that as well as we consider property tax rates. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As far as the debt service levy goes for this next year, it did increase by about $107,000. And that was just simply due to the needed street improvements that we had in our community on it as well. Well, let's go ahead, Mandy. As far as the Pella ambulance, we do have a full year of operations for the Pella ambulance in the next year's budget. And we are projecting an operational subsidy. And I believe that does include their capital improvements of $691,000 when we are forecasting that it's going to take to operate the Pella ambulance. Now, as far as state property tax legislation, it is important to note that, starting this year, we began with a residential rollback, what we thought at just over 56.5%. Actually, it went down close to 5%, with 54.65%. This resulted in this current year that we will be talking about, that would start on next July, a decrease in property tax revenues of about $160,000. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. In addition to the residential rollback, we've also had state funding decreases. And this deals with property tax cuts that the state had that was implemented back in 2013. They've been on a sliding scale as far as the backfill amount. This year, it's a decrease of about $47,000. We've been notified by the state of Iowa that the $138,000 that we're planning for next July, starting next July, will actually be zero by the time we get to fiscal year '26, '27. And as council is well aware, we are facing inflationary pressures. And that's been one of the more challenging aspects of the 2024 budget. In addition, we do have projected compensation increases for the city workforce that will be higher than past years. And that's just simply due to the tight labor market and also our compensation review that we anticipate completing this spring. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Again, all this resolution simply does is establishes the public hearing date as April 4th for the 2024 budget. And once again, we're looking for council direction on what you'd like to establish as the maximum operational levy on this option number one, would maintain the current levy at $10.20. Option number two would increase the levy to $10.70. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council would have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get... Well, I guess I'm a little confused. So we are simply setting a date to have this discussion, but we have to publish it? So do we also have to say 10:20 or 10:70 tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we're not setting that rate?
No, you're not setting the rate this evening, but we have to publish the notice. And the notice has to go out. And that's unfortunately, we're caught in a timing issue on this. And so, yes, we're looking for direction on which notice to publish.
Okay, so the resolution is to set the date and the maximum levy rate?
That is correct, sir.
Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
So does the motion have to include the rate?
It does not. The resolution actually doesn't reference this. The notice is separate. So approval of the resolution just sets the date of the public hearing. We just need direction on which notice to publish. So approval of the resolution is just for the April 4th date.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Spoh, any discussion? Anybody not understand what we're doing?
For my sake, the state is decreasing our backfill, like it's called, by $160,000. And it'll be down to zero by '24, '25, or '26, '27. So we can't play on those dollars in the future as what the state legislature's saying. So raising our levy, that 50 cents, provides just over $300,000 to potentially cover that. Is that what we're... My summary of the math, correct?
Believe it or not, that is correct. The 1070 would yield about $300,000 more to support city operations.
This is somewhat... This decision is somewhat forced by these current legislature's decisions?
Yeah, I think the intent with the state legislature is they wanted to make sure that there's notice and discussion to the public about what the property tax rate is planned to be. And that's the intent of this. And what I also want to state, we're not obligated to levy the maximum amount. It's simply that we're establishing it for discussion purposes.
So this is really just a three-part thing. This time, we approve the resolution. Next time, we approve the maximum. And in the budget hearings, we approve the reality.
That's when it counts.
Right now, it's just the date.
It's the date, but we also need to publish the notice. And there's been a lot of discussion this year as far as the maximum levy amount on it. And so we thought with that and looking at it, going through the budget, council has not had the privilege of going through that yet. But you're going to be getting your budget books this Friday on it. We wanted to give you a couple of options because we had asked earlier about the maximum levy amount. After looking at the city budget and also talking to a few of you that spent some time with me, and I want to thank you for that. Staff's recommendation would be $10.20. Our... But it's ultimately council's decision on what the property tax should be on it. And we wanted to make sure that if you felt there was anything that was underfunded or you wanted to have additional flexibility, that we at least gave you the option for the hearing on it. That's why we put a 5% increase on it.
And just to clarify one more time. So in order to publish it on the proper timeline, the publisher has to say the rate, the max rate. We're not setting the max rate. It has to say what it could be. We will make the decision on what it actually is later.
So the only... If we chose, if we said we want to direct staff to publish option number one, that's all we can do when we come to vote. If we said option two, we could do either of those or anywhere in between or whatever. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I guess the motion is to set the date, but we also, at this point, need to inform or help them to set or do the published rate or the max rate. So it seems prudent to me to publish the 1070 because otherwise, we wouldn't have that option if we go through the budget and we need it. And then we'll decide later. So nobody's making a decision on what the tax rate is now. That'll come later. Does that...
Yep.
Is that whatever... Everybody got that?
Yes.
All right. So is that what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do you need a motion?
Well, we have a motion. We have a motion. Did we do a motion? Yeah. So now, we have to vote on the motion to the resolution to set the date of public hearing on the max property tax rate. So all in favor, please say yes. Close, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Resolution Number 6563, entitled Resolution Approving Authorizing the Execution of a Real Estate Gift Agreement with Community Betterment Organization. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor Deward stated, what we're considering is a real estate gift from the Community Betterment Organization. This is for the properties that are in 215 Main Street, 712 Hoover Street, and 714 Hoover Street. These facilities were the former Pella Real Estate Center. And they're the area that's within the red highlighted area on the big board that we have here. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, from city staff's position, the CBO has generously offered to give these facilities to the city of Pella for municipal use. It is important to note that the conditions of the gift that we are considering this evening, that is the city council's turn, that we would like to sell them in the future, that the CBO is preserving first right of refusal for 15 years on the property. Now, overall, Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending acceptance of the real estate gift as these facilities would address several items that are identified in the city's long-term facility plans, including having a dedicated council chambers. I believe it's what the initial plans for the facilities were on it as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Seems strange to have to make a motion to accept the gift. That's what we're going to do. A motion for approval of this resolution.
Still moved.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, discussion? Well, I would simply say, on behalf of this community, a huge thank you to the Community Betterment Organization. This is a wonderful gift. This is a $750,000 value gift. And when I look back, when we were discussing this opportunity, when I look back at the 2019 facility needs of the city of Pella, this building, we could check a lot of boxes with this building. And so it's a wonderful gift. And it's going to save the city a bunch of money in the long run. And so I want to make sure the CBO understands how grateful we are that they are willing to make the gift. And it's just another example of the support that we get as an entire community from the community and their desire to make this place the type of community that it is. Thank you very, very much. All right, so we need to vote on the motion to accept the gift. All in favor, please say yes. Close, no. Please call the roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Resolution Number 6564, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Services Agreement with Garden &amp; Associates Limited for the East Third Street Reconstruction Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. As Mayor Deward stated, what we're considering this evening is an engineering services agreement for the proposed improvements on East Third Street. This particular project involves approximately 1,100 This particular project involves approximately eleven-hundred feet linear feet of reconstruction, and it is the red highlighted area that we have here on here. So, the piece of, in, in, East Thirty Street, excuse me, that we are discussing this evening extends from Ossilus to the south, up to P Street, up to north. And once again, we also have the red highlighted area here, as well as the details of the proposed improvements on, on the big boards. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the total engineering fees are concerned, it is important to note that the preliminary design on the project is just under sixty-five thousand dollars. Key part of any engineering contract is always the construction observation services. As I had tagged, it's just over seventy-two thousand dollars. And so, in total, we estimate the engineering services component of this project to be just over a hundred-and-forty-one, well, actually, one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Now, as far as the construction cost, and we are looking as far as this street segment, it's right at six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Now, if approved, Garden will be revising the estimates, and if there's any escalation in cost on that as well, we will make sure that we discuss that with council before proceeding on this. But once again, what this resolution would do is approve the engineering and design fees, or engineering services agreement, excuse me, with Garden &amp; Associates for the East Third Street Reconstruction Project.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
For Rinderhorst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rinderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Not unqualified.
Mark, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed. Moving on, uh, resolution number six-five-six-five, entitled Resolution Approving Preliminary Plaid for Hopkins Subdivision. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Dwork stated, what we're considering this evening is a preliminary plaid for Mr. Dave Hopkins of Ray Property Management. This particular plaid is abutted along Bosson Drive, and we will highlight the area that we showed up here on the big board as well. This particular plaid is for a two-and-a-half acre parcel, once being proposed as nine residential lots this evening. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe we've covered this, but the lot layouts are, will be shown up here, and actually, this is the preliminary plaid that we are reviewing this evening. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the city code, it's always important to note, we're fresh, council's well aware, when we talk about preliminary plaid, this would be the overall game plan for the development, and oftentimes, it includes public infrastructure as well. Now, what we're charged with under city code is to make sure that it is in performance with the city's comprehensive plan. And in this case, when we look at the comprehensive plan, there's a couple things to keep in mind. Housing is a key priority for the city of Pella, which being proposed is in line with that key strategic priority. Second of all, when you look at the future use plan map for this parcel, it is designated as a density residential, and the designation and the density that's being proposed by Mr. Hopkins does align in fact as well. So, overall, we believe it does comply with the city's, or is in performance with the city's comprehensive plan. We also feel that the preliminary plaid meets the minimum requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance as well. And as a result, we are recommending approval this evening, the planning and zoning commission did review this matter at the ball and approved the preliminary plaid at this September twenty-sixth meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Spore?
Manster Spore, any discussion?
Jerry, were there any concerns noted at the P and Z meeting?
No, we're not.
Anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rinderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rinderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number six-five-six-six, entitled Resolution Authorizing Chive Hattery to Proceed with the Schematic Design Phase of the Pella Indoor Recreation Center Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. Mayor Dwork stated what this resolution would do, would approve the schematic, the proposed schematic design for the Pella Recreation Center, and also authorizes our engineers, who is Chive Hattery, to proceed with the design development phase of the project. Now, I wanted to preface my comments, the presentation this night has been shortened. And we talked about this issue on March seventh. However, we'd be more than happy to explain in the item further detail if we cover it, if we don't fail to cover it, um, for it to be as thorough as what we normally would. Now, when we talk about the Pella Recreation Center, it is important to note that it is a proposed seventy-eight thousand square foot facility. We do have listed up on the board the main amenities included with the recreation center as well. I'll highlight just a few of them, but we do have four full-size gymnasiums included within the plant, an indoor walking track, a competition swimming pool, a recreation swimming pool, and as well as, we also have large atrium and meeting space areas as well. In addition, I'd be remiss if I did not mention that it also includes numerous workout areas as well. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, listed up on the board, and council's well aware of this, but is the proposed layout of the recreation center. And again, this is similar to what Chive Hattery reviewed with this on March seventh as well. Mandy, if we could give everyone just a few seconds to review it, then we'll move on, please. Okay, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the estimated cost of the recreation center, it's just, it's at forty-three million seventy-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. We do have listed up on the board the components of the estimated cost of the project. I would like to point out, since we're relatively early in the design phase of the project, the engineers are still carrying with them a contingency fee of four-point-six million dollars for the design component on this as well. So, but overall, when we look at the rec center, rec center only, it's a forty-three, forty-three million seventy-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Okay, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the rec center and how it relates to the city's long-term facilities plan, once again, we started off with was a forty-five million dollar plan that included thirty-one million dollars for the Pella Rec Center. We had designated five-and-a-half million dollars for the city's community center, and at the time, we thought that the infrastructure estimate for the Pella Rec Center would be close to six million. And then, we had two-and-a-half million for contingency. Our costs, or these are based on our current cost estimates that we have at the date. The rec center, the estimated cost is at forty-three million eighty thousand. The community center is still at five-and-a-half million dollars. We'll be talking about initiating the engineering for that project later on during policy and planning. The infrastructure estimate for both University Street, as well as sanitary sewer options for the recreation center is just at seven-point-six million dollars. And we still have the two-and-a-half million dollars worth of contingencies. So, overall, the revised estimated cost that we have now with the facilities plan is fifty-eight million six-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the funding is concerned for the recreation center, to date, we've had very, been very successful in raising funds for the city's facility plans, and we've had strong financial support of this, and very thankful for that as well. Private pledges to date totaled just over thirteen-point-four million dollars. The city's contribution for the recreation center was put into two components that we had up here in explaining this. In total, it was twenty-two million dollars, and what was proposed back when we first started the facilities plan in April of twenty-twenty-two, that the city felt that they would still have right around five million dollars, and we call it surplus cash. Technically, you could use this cash reserves that we could contribute to the project. We also felt, looking at the local auction bonds, based off the local auction proceeds, and at the time, the interest rates involved with the local auction bonds, we felt by using half of the proceeds of the local auction packs, that that would generate at the time a seventeen million dollar bond issue. The key takeaway when we talk about the city's financial commitment is looking at the interest rate and the current estimates of the local auction bond. That may not be necessarily seventeen million, which in total, if we're looking at the city's total of twenty-two million, would mean the surplus cash or the cash reserves may be more on it. Those are the types of details that tend to fluctuate with projects. That's something for council to keep in mind. When we look at the city's cash, our commitment of twenty-two million, plus the private pledges that have been raised to date, our total funding commitments are at thirty-five-point-four million. The estimated cost of the facilities plan is at just under fifty-eight-point-seven, which means the remaining funding that we need to be secured for the projects is just shy of twenty-three-point-three million dollars. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And what we're here to talk about this evening is the proposal to continue on with the engineering services, uh, plan, engineering services for the recreation center. The next phase of the engineering services is the design development phase, as Chive Hattery explained when they were here on March seventh. That is going to involve mechanical, electrical work, site grading, and also refinement and construction cost estimates. The cost of the design development phase is five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now, the key takeaway, and as we consider we progress with the engineering services for the recreation center, Chive has told staff, and they've told the city, that they also need to have, be working with our engineers on University Street and Baseline Drive. And the reason for this is the overall plan for the recreation center is to extend University Street and Baseline Drive. And if you could picture both of those streets being extended out there, the grading on the rec center needs to align with the grading for both the University Street and Baseline Drive as well, and that's why they need to be working in conjunction on this. So, if we proceed with the design development phase, we'll need to proceed with the, you know, design services for both University Street and Baseline Drive as well. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, overall, from the city staff's perspective, when we consider the Pella Recreation Center, and we consider what council established as far as goals for both the recreation center, as well as the upgrades, the current community centers was, we're to improve the quality alive, attract citizens to our community, and increase the city's tax benefits. We believe the proposed project does meet those goals. Furthermore, we also believe that the project is located in an area that really aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. Specifically, when we look at East Pella, that particular area, it's been identified as a future growth area in the city's contrib- comprehensive plan. In addition, it appears that significantly, well, not it appears, we have raised a significant amount of money for the project, which indicates there is proposed support for the schematic design. So, overall, city staff is supportive of the project. However, we also believe the ultimate size and scale of the project is gonna be directly proportional to the amount of funds that are raised for the facilities as well. So, with this, when we consider moving on with the design development phase for the recreation center, we consider the funds that have been raised to date, the estimated cost, the funds that still need to be raised for the project. We believe this is a council policy decision on the level of engineering, which still needs to be performed, or which should be performed during the fundraising stage. So, with this, we believe that there needs, it's a policy decision by the city council that needs to be made, whether we proceed with the engineering phase for the recreation center. We did place in the memo a couple things to keep in mind, that if we do not proceed with engineering phase and focus on raising funds for the facility under our contract with Chive Hattery, we can delay the contract for thirty days, as we consider our options passed. At that time, staff would say we need to consult the city attorney. Secondly, what Chive has told us to, if we do not proceed, or if there's delays with the design development phase on the project, one of the items that we've targeted from inception, this dates back to when we discussed the fact back in April twenty-twenty-two, we've always targeted a tentative opening date of twenty-twenty-five for the recreation center. If there is a delay in engineering services, either on the design development or University Street, that could impact the opening date or the tentative completion date for the project, which right now is twenty-twenty-five. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Before we have to answer any questions, the mayor or council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
I would like to put a motion on the floor. I'd like to place a motion on the floor to table the, this item for thirty days, as indicated in our packet on page one-oh-eight, that we have thirty days, and if we need sixty days, we reach out to our attorney. So, my motion is table this item, item number E-five, for thirty days.
Okay. Is there support?
I would need support.
Hearing none, we will, I will entertain a motion for approval of resolution number six-five-six-six.
Still moved.
Manster Hopkins, any discussion, question?
Mike, after the design development phase, is, is there enough information then for, if the city council would vote to go forward with bids, that the, that the, it's enough information in that design development phase for all the specs and everything for a bid?
No, after the design development, that's a very good question. That phase of the project, the design development phase is about three months, and then there's also a construction, a document phase of the project as well. That estimated cost is just right around nine-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars, and then we have a bid phase after that. So, it'll happen in rapid succession on it, but that's part of the design.
And you have to do the design, obviously, before you can go to the next phase?
Yes, that is correct. And what this phase is going to focus on is mechanical, electrical work. It's also going to focus on the grading of the site, and then specifically, the alignment of the site with University Street and Baseline Drive. Once this is done, then there's a phase in the contract that's the construction documents, that's the preparation of all the bid documents at that point in time.
And we'll be able to start looking at the operational budget pro forma part of this project. We heard that several times tonight.
That's, um, that's at the purview of it. That's at the discretion of the city council, and when we'd like to start looking at the operational standpoint of that, so.
Do you need much more information out of the design to be able to do that, or do we have enough to?
No, no. We could be ready to discuss that, but that's at the discretion of the city council.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so, we'll vote on resolution number six-five-six-six. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rinderhorst?
No.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six-five-six-seven, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Services Agreement with Garden &amp; Associates Limited for the University Street Baseline Drive Extensions. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer the council's attention to the big board on to decide it. What we have this evening is a proposed contract with Garden &amp; Associates for the extension of University Street and Baseline Drive. But we do have a map of the location of the Pella Sports Park. The proposed indoor recreation center will be located in the northwest corner of the project. But under the terms of garden contract, what we're considering this evening is University Street would be extended from Two Hundred and Forty Place all the way up to County Line Road. In addition, Baseline Drive would be constructed to the north to connect with University Street on this. Now, overall, this project includes thirty-one feet of street grading, storm sewer, bulkhead water main, and as well, we'll be installing a bike trail that will start on Two Hundred and Forty Place and extend out to the County Line Road as well. In addition, that bike trail, plans are for it to connect to the Pella Sports Park bike trail. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the not exceed figure that we're considering this evening for engineering services totals three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and the agreement also includes the services would be preliminary design, final design, and the bidding process as well. It's important to note that what we're not considering this evening is construction administration, so if we do proceed with the project, that will be a separate contract for that as well. So, now, finally, when we look at the cost of the total construction of these improvements, it's at five-million-six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. And if approved by the city council, the funding source for the engineering contract that we're considering this, this evening would be cash reserves for the project. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes city staff's presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
I have a motion to place on the floor to table this item for thirty days, as designed or explained in our council packet on page one-oh-seven, or until council is made aware of how we are planning on ascertaining the public right of way on this piece of property.
Is there support? Okay, hearing none, we will vote on the motion to approve resolution number six-five-six-seven. Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Manster Hopkins, any discussion?
I, I think of all that we've talked about in this whole package, this is probably the most important, that we get that, that road built, one way or another.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rinderhorst?
No.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six-five-six-eight, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Service, Services Agreement with Vincen and Kim for the Indoor Recreation Center Sanitary Sewer Improvements. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board. And what we have this evening is an engineering services agreement. This is for the sanitary service, services portion of the project, and this is for the Pella indoor, proposed indoor recreation center only. We do have the scope of the improvements for what's actually being proposed for the project, and what we have is a lift station, as well as a force main, along with a new gravity sewer. Now, as far as the engineering fees that we're concerning, considering this evening, the engineering fees total one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, the preliminary and final design for the project is at sixty thousand. The construction services and project administration component of the project is at fifty-eight The construction services and project administration component of the project is at $58,000. Now, the total construction cost for these improvements is estimated to be at $835,000. Council order to approve this resolution, we will be using cash reserves. The authorization will only be given to the engineers to conduct the preliminary and final design for the project, and that would be at $60,000. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
I have a motion to put on the floor to table this discussion for 30 days until we have a greater understanding of our private funding and a pro forma as to what it will cost the citizens to maintain the operational budget of this building.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there support? Hearing no support, we will move on to vote on the, on resolution number 6568. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins?
Score?
Score? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
No.
The Anstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to abstract bills number 2123, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Score.
Branderhorst, Manster, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
The Anstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, any council members have any other business that you would like to have addressed tonight? I too, I would echo what Lynn said a while ago. Appreciate the comments from everybody. It's good to hear from people. I also wanted to personally thank the council for their vote tonight. I think moving these projects forward is, is critical to, to this community. I've had the good opportunity to visit with a lot of people and talk about the plan, and the amount of enthusiasm, and not only are they enthusiastic, but they're opening their checkbooks to help us pay for this project is pretty encouraging for me. So I appreciate council keeping these projects moving forward. Okay, any member of the public have any other business beside what we've already talked about? Please step forward to and address.
I would like to talk about item E5. Says we're 23 million short.
It was on the agenda, you had plenty of opportunity prior. We've already had this discussion for agenda items. Is there anything else not on the agenda you want to discuss?
I would like to talk about our meeting at the Naderlanders early this January.
Okay.
You said, Mr. Mayor, if we don't have the money, we're not going to do it. Is that still true? We don't have the money. Why are we still moving ahead? You sat there and told us, we don't get the money, we're not going to do this. I'm sure there's a few other members here, yeah. You know, 17 million, we don't really have that either. So we're, we're basically 40 million short. We don't have the money. And you said, if we don't have the money, we're not going forward. Are we, now we're going forward. What is it, Mr. Mayor?
Anything else, Keith?
I think that pretty much sums it up. Thank you.
It's not a question and answer session. A lot of many times, I got to say that. This is a comment section, your opportunity to make comments.
Since this isn't a question and answer session, I'll pose this question and call you tomorrow, Mike, for an answer if you could. As it relates to the funding for the community center, the five and a half million, tomorrow, when the Fed determines the rate, and as you talked about, the potential increased costs when change orders come and if things get delayed, is the five and a half million dollars earmarked for the community center protected from reckless change orders and missed dates and misspending? You can answer that. I'll give you a call tomorrow. I just want to give you a chance to prepare for that. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Yeah. Three minutes, three minutes. Three minutes. Tim Tyrone Heiss, 1101 Westport Street. I just want to say that I want to thank council for the last couple of years and all the activity that you guys have done. You're doing something that's way better than doing nothing. Doing nothing doesn't change anything. Doing something changes something. All right? And so I appreciate that, and so thank you for all the work that each of you guys have done. It's exciting as a business owner in town to see that something is getting done. I'm hopefully going to be able to see and find more team members. I'm going to hopefully be able to see and serve more guests in our store, and I hope that all of the business owners are going to be able to, be able to abide and give those services that they give to each of them. The other thing that I'm excited for as a parent is, I'm on the booster, I'm on the Hoops Club Board. We have 200 kids, third through eighth grade, 200. We also have numerous other clubs that need places to do these things, and we don't have those. And so I'm excited about what our council is doing for that. Finally, or two other things, one thing is, I love the collaboration between the private and public sector of this town. That is why projects like these work. Urbandale, that project was public only. There's a reason why. Public, private, we were able to build. And finally, I don't think the staff probably gets recognized for all the hard work that you guys do enough. So Mike, staff over there, every department, I just want to say thank you because our city is awesome, and it wouldn't be running without you guys. So thank you very much.
Dave Spucker, how is the rec center going to improve my quality of life when I'm fighting sewers backups in my basement? For three years, I've been fighting it, and you keep pushing it back. You're supposed to have our street fixed and our sewer fixed because it's the oldest in town. I'm getting fed up with it. Thank you.
Dave, Dave, I, I don't know if this, I promise you, I will have an eye on Union Street during this upcoming budget session.
You all should.
Yeah. This gentleman can't do a load of laundry without running a garden hose down his sewer drain. Am I correct on that?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think.
And there's, there's several of us on that street.
Yeah, I think there are four houses on your street. So I think we should all keep an eye on that. I know I wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, we're moving to policy and planning. We'll start with the Community Center renovation project architect selection process update. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and what we're looking for is direction, and specifically, we anticipate this will be a formal action item that will be presented for the council's consideration on April 4. So we're hoping to address any questions, comments, concerns before we get to the action item on April 4. But the purpose of this item is to receive an update on the architectural selection process for the community center renovation. The 50,000-foot overview of the, of the processes, five proposals were received, but the two top scoring firm providing an in-house presentation, I had heard in January of this year. Ultimately, council committee is recommending proceeding with Shimmer and Associates, and their fees are approximately seven and a half percent of the project's budget. Now, where we came up with the budget fees in total, that could be somewhat of the moving target. It really depends on the budget that council establishes for the project. But our five and a half million dollars that we had at current preliminary established are targeted toward the community center. The total budget and the fees that we have based off that budget are at $375,000. Council order to proceed with the architect selection on April 1. The proposed funding source for the project is cash reserves on this. And so with that, once again, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking at, and what I could say before we turn it over for questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, though we have council member Dave Hopkins, who is our chairperson on this, and I'd like to give him an opportunity to add any additional commentary on the process, as well as the community services director Jeanette Vaughn on, on the process and the selection and the recommendation that we're making to council as well, so.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So I see a couple folks on the committee here, and we've had some, we, we have had some lively discussions, and it's been, it's been good just, just with, with the team that we have put together that care about the, the amenities that happen inside the community center, and then just how we're going to preserve and make the community, the existing community center, better. So I'm excited about what we have, and I'm excited about the architect that we selected. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing it moved out the road.
So do we, do we need, do you need any direction? We'll get this approval or approve them to start the process on April 4, correct?
Well, we've been trying, Mr. Mayor, is just to explain our process. Anything related to Solis Plan, we try to come and at least have one policy and planning session before it's a formal action item on the matter. This is just consistent with what we've done for the rest of the project on, on it as well, so.
Was Shimmer the one that did those preliminary drawings way back when?
Okay, anything else on this one? All right, moving to the South Side Beautification Project Update. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and for this item, what we're looking for is direction tonight from the city council, specifically on how we proceed with the project. A little bit of background on this, the South Side Beautification Project, we do have a picture up on the big board. Most people would probably see this as the green area where the old power plant used to be at when we talked about the beautification project. In 2019, we hired CDA to develop the master plan for the site. We have the master plan that is showing up on, on the board. And since inception of the project, council member Lynn Branderhorst has been our chairperson on the project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, specifically, what we're talking about this evening is the environmental report and analysis that we received from Impact 7G on this matter. Before proceeding with the project and the engineering on the project, we felt it was good to double check things, particularly since the last time that we really did a lot of environmental assessment work on the project was back in 2000, I'd say 10, 11, 12 with the power plant, and also the decommissioning of the power plant site. Recently, we've hired Impact 7G to do an additional analysis of the site. And I want to stress this, this matter that we have, the preliminary report, and we included the full report in your council packet, but based on the results, Impact 7G's opinion is that there was detected soil contamination that were above the DNR standards. We also have had conversations with the DNR on this matter. What the lab analysis showed that both arsenic in some spots and lead were above the DNR standards. Now, based on the consultant's recommendation that it detected soil contamination, they believe it represents minimal risk to human health and the environment, and they're recommending no further action on the project, which means their recommendation would be to proceed with the engineering on the project and build, and build the South Side Beautification Project. We've also been in contact with the DNR, and we want to make perfectly clear that council chooses to do additional environmental work on this, we could always ask the DNR for additional input on this. That's somewhat of an elongated process and discussions with the DNR, and it may take a while to come to a conclusion, if you even get an answer from the DNR on the matter. And I don't mean to answer or give an opinion one way or another on the project, but what we have is the consultant has recommended no further action. We've been in conversations with the DNR, and we want to make sure council understands where we're at with the environment, with the environmental, before we spend significant funds on the site. And if we need to go further with the DNR, from council's perspective, we're happy to do that, but we just want to make sure, just in summary on this and conversations with the DNR, it may take a while to get an answer from the DNR on the project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes my report. Jeanette, is there anything that I missed or that we should be informing council on this matter?
Other than not knowing their timeframe, what, what does the DNR really do? Is that a free service of them, or do they contract that we have to pay, or, I mean, they're our chief regulator. A consultant can say, go ahead, but the, the DNR is the one that, that rules.
Jeanette, do you want to try to answer that, that question?
I will do my best. Like Mike said, we've, we've had a couple different conversations with IDNR, and they, I'm trying to think of a way to phrase this, but they basically said, we can come to them, but they will not give us a document that says, yes, you are safe to build here. That's not what they do. The further investigation would be if they, if we would want to enter into one of their programs for ground sites, then it would be a whole different level of testing, and you could get some documentation after that. Our conversations with the DNR and also with the results of the Impact 7G study do not indicate that we're even close to being that type of level, but it's something we could approach and let them ask.
And Jeanette, I remember when we first started down this road, we talked a lot about digging down, and this soil currently has no nutrients. So you see this gorgeous picture of these lovely gardens, but this soil won't support anything, and you can see it doesn't even support grass. So in order to do this project, you would need to dig down and bring in some better soil. Am I correct on that?
Correct. The master plan of the study does include removing, I think it was at least 12 to 18 inches of soil.
Yes.
Putting it back in was something that's actually living.
And then there was also the discussion about then remaining soil would either be encapsulated with walkways, concrete, blacktops, so you wouldn't have any problem. And then on further discussion with various scientists, I've also found out there's also the school of thought called eradication. So you could have replacement, encapsulation, and eradication, and to my surprise, one of the best plants to eradicate toxins from the soil is a tulip bulb. Well, doesn't that work well for us? So, and then everyone panics when they hear the word arsenic. I mean, we, we get a little scared, but arsenic is also found in apple seeds, and arsenic is also found in elderberries, and that's why you take elderberry syrup when you feel like you're getting a virus, because it's a low-grade arsenic that will kill the virus or weaken the virus, but not harm you. Well, that if you took too much elderberry, I'm sure. So I, I don't want people to be alarmed when they hear the word arsenic. Was that a good summation of your understanding of arsenic, Jeanette? Probably too much.
I have no comment on that.
Sorry.
I'll make a comment. I would not advise taking arsenic.
I didn't.
But it is a naturally occurring.
I did not advise taking arsenic.
Or elderberry, for that matter, but it is naturally occurring. What I found interesting about this study was that they plugged the numbers, which were elevated, into DNR's calculators of risk, and they compared it to kind of incidental or construction-based contact, and then residential contact, which would be living there for Burke for 30 years permanently. And the construction worker exposure, which would be what this project would require, even the episodic seasonal plantings and maintenance at the site, all fell firmly into the construction. Worker exposure was far below any sort of risk ratio, which I was pleased to see. The residential, which would never be a part of this section's plan, did cross risk thresholds, but again, that's not the intended use, nor should it ever be the intended use of this section. I don't think it's in our comprehensive plan to put residential there. So I was encouraged by this private study. I, my two cents on this would be, I don't know that engaging the DNR really will provide additional reassurance or validation for us. I think this private study using the DNR's calculations seemed adequate for us to proceed. I think it's a great project. It's awesome for the South Side. And the entry, like we were chatting with Val last time, about the entry of Pelles, beautifying, making beautiful the entrance, and introducing that Dutch concept, it's a fantastic idea. So I would say we can go ahead and move on, and give conscience using these DNR-based calculations.
Okay, Jeanette, was there anything about if you go through that brown field, you know, that, in that direction, is there more funding available like that if, to remove like the top 18 inches of, of soil to replace that, if you get a designation that it is contaminated or not?
I might have to look into that.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? It sounds like, let's say.
I have one question, just to ask, when the old coal plant was demoed, was there a remediation or address of the potential toxicity at that time?
Yeah, I'm going to ask if Nate Spergen, our electric director, Yeah, I'm going to ask if Nate Spurgeon, our electric director, is on the line, and if he's not, I'll give you a high-level overview. Okay. When we removed the old power plant, needed to be, were shut down the old power plant, there was quite a bit of work done environmentally on the site, and there was a level, the amount I'm going to tell you is probably going to be wrong, so I won't quote adept on it, but we did remove sections of the power plant that's at, particularly at the coal yard from the site, disposed of it. The DNR was consulted throughout the project, and we had both the decommissioning and the shutdown of the power plant were overseen by an outside engineer that was fluent in both environmental and also decommissioning projects for power plants as well. So the DNR was involved in it. We also hired environmental assessors throughout the project as well, and we received a statement of no further action on what we did as far as the decommissioning of the power plant. So we did work, but once again, the reason we follow back up on this is all of our work at the time would have been done in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, I believe, right around that approximate time period. Honestly, we thought, and at the time, we were not proposing a project of this magnitude, and so we thought it was a good idea to follow up and do a separate environmental assessment.
Okay, anything else? Have what you need, Mike?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving on to Pella Community Ambulance Request to Implement K nine Therapy Program.
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and have Chief Higabotham actually lead us through this presentation. So Chief, please.
Obviously, as first responders, police, fire, EMS, we are subject to a degree of stress and traumatic things that happen that most people aren't supposed to see. And they found that if you have a therapy dog, obviously, there's, there's a history of therapy dogs, but they, they are now pushing the last couple of years to put them in fire departments, police departments, to help with, after those bad calls, be able to debrief and actually open up and be able to talk. And they found that therapy dogs really do a good job of helping with that. And obviously, PTSD is a big thing in our service and first responders, and our mental health of my, my staff, and obviously, McSheehy's staff, and Randy Bogard's staff is a, is a big thing. This therapy dog would be one that could be deployed and would be, make regular visits to all the different departments. I think council will probably be good to have a therapy dog make visits for you guys. But it could be deployed in many different places. I know that Knoxville has a therapy dog, and it's been deployed at schools over a dozen times. I know of two times just recently here in Pella, and we would like to be able to offer that to our own community and not have to rely on somebody else to do that. So Crisis Kines of the Midlands has offered to totally support this, so there's going to be no fee whatsoever. This dog would actually live at our station, and our staff would have daily chores, and then myself and Jim Wood would be handlers, so we would take the dog to all the trainings. These dogs would be trained to actually sense who is most stressed. So after a call, it would go and sit by the most stressed individual, so I could keep an eye on my staff, and Chief McSheehy could do the same for his. I think it's a, it's a great, great thing, and it's a huge thing that they're pushing, like you said, in the last couple of years for first responders.
Could you tell us who Crisis Kines of the Midlands is and how the selection process went?
Sure. I'm actually a board member. So Justin Smith is a former assistant chief for me in Pella Ambulance. His wife is a veterinarian for Midland Prairie Veterinary Clinic in Polfax, and they have two other locations, Milo and Marshalltown. So they were at a conference, and they met up with Council Bluffs, deputy sheriff, who actually has the only one in Iowa did at that time, and presented this to them and how he's overwhelmed with it. So they decided to make this Crisis Kines of the Midlands here and get it out, and they've had more requests for dogs, and there's one in Newton that's probably going to be coming soon, there's one in Bond Ranch that's coming soon, all from the similar litter that I'm proposing. So it's, it's kind of blowing up because it's, it's definitely needed. But it's, it's new, and it's within the last year that this, this Crisis Kines of the Midlands came together.
Thank you.
I'd love to put a puppy up on this street.
As you say, you get to pick your puppy, or?
Actually, we get to pick of the litter, being a board member of Iowa can do that, so. I have my mother and the father on top, and they do have, this is a Crisis Kine Therapy bloodlines from Ohio, so that's where these dogs are from, is in Ohio.
Is it a labradoodle?
Sounds good.
It is a golden doodle. Yep. Knoxville's got a German shepherd, and they've got a goldador, and what they've found with theirs is that they're not hypoallergenic. So when they go to schools, they ran into issues with kids being allergic to it. That's why I wanted to go to a hypoallergenic crowd.
All right, any more questions? I would assume we will support this whole.
Just push this one down.
All right, sounds good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Spro.
Banister, Spro, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Anstruck?
Yes.
Spro?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brander Horst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are adjourned.